All right, good morning, everybody. If everyone could find a seat if they can, stand if you want, but let's try to go ahead and get this thing started. All right, good morning. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is June 18th, 2024. The time is 9:30. I would like to call up Pastor Ben Flexa from Step Faith Ministries for the invocation. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before your presence. First of all, thank you for giving us another day of life for such a beautiful morning. Thank you, Father, that as we stand upon your word, your word states that where there are two or three gathered in your name, you dwell amongst them. So we thank you for being a part of this meeting. I thank you this morning for these, your servants, our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service each commissioner has chosen to take upon on behalf of each and every one of us here. Give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our county. Give them power to do what is right, to rule in fairness. May our community be known for its justice. We pray that you would be glorified today through the decisions of this city council. Heavenly Father, we pray that as today's agenda is discussed for our county, that the people's interests may be above our own. Remind each commissioner that you have entrusted them this position not to be served, but to serve the public. We also pray that you give each commissioner the grace to come up with the best possible and morally right solution that would best benefit the people of Lee County. Father, help us to never forget that even though we who are gathered here today come from different ethnic, political, religious, and socio-economic backgrounds, that with you it is possible to love one another, respect one another, and serve one another. We pray this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, please be seated. Okay, we have three ceremonial presentations this morning. I would like to recognize Commissioner Pendergrass for the first presentation.
Great, thank you, Chairman. If I could have Pablo and Karen come up, we have a special guest this morning. Ravioli is his name, and I think he's gonna have a new name. And as you can see in the picture, he fits my lap really well. And Frenchie is a two-year-old, wait, Frenchie. Ravioli is a little two-year-old Frenchie. He was a stray, and nobody ever claimed him, so he was put up for adoption today. Pablo, Karen, do you want to tell us something?
Okay, so Ravioli, like you just said, Ravioli is a two-year-old French Bulldog. We get them all the time. We have another one if anybody's interested because we already have an adopter for him on the way.
Yeah. Congratulations. And who's the proud parent this morning?
Oh.
Amanda, stand up. Amanda, come on up, come on up. So Amanda saw I before I did, so she beat me to the punch here, so I'm not taking him home today, but he sees her coming, and Amanda will be taking Ravioli home tonight, so.
She's standing, he's ears up for everybody, so.
So any other great programs going on this summer with the family services?
Yes, right now, we're inviting everybody to channel their inner cattitude because it is kitten season, and all our cats and kittens are $20. Adopt one, get a friend at no additional fee. And then on Thursday at Miramar Outreach Center with the Sheriff's Office, we have an adoption and foster event for our kittens from 2:00 to 5:00, so come on out and see us all there. You can take one home right from Miramar with your opportunity.
It's a great opportunity for families that want to adopt a dog that's already in need, so it's great. Thank you for everything. Thanks to all your staff for doing family services.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Amanda and your husband, so on your adoption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Amanda, if you change your mind, just let me know.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hammond, would you like to present the next ceremony?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you very much. This is an exciting morning. We would like to call up Mac Young and everybody with the Parks and Rec Department, and this is always one of our favorite presentations every year. If y'all would come up to the podium, I'd like to read a resolution into the record about, I think it's National Parks and Rec Month.
Now, the whole park.
What I love is they always bring props at the end.
That's right. I want to tell you right here, this is an old one. This is about 50 years old.
Oh, man, that's an old lacrosse.
It belongs to Kathy Loomis.
Was that from back when you were like in high school?
How y'all doing?
We'll take a picture in just a second. I'll go ahead and read this into the record. We'll take a picture, and then Mac, I think you're probably up for speaking.
Yeah, we'll say a couple.
Perfect, okay. Well, the resolution reads as follows. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this county, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature which positively impacts mental health, whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction, whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas, I only got seven more to go. Whereas, Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate, and recreate, rather, outdoors, whereas the Parks and Recreation Department is highly and actively recovering from the over $28 million in damage from Hurricane Ian impacting every single site and facility, whereas Lee County Parks and Rec recently organized the inaugural Southwest Florida Ag Expo in which over 80,000 people attended, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Rec Month, whereas Lee County also recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Rec resources. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, does hereby proclaim July 2024 as National Park and Recreation Month. Congratulations. This is signed by our chairman, and I'll present it to you, Mac. Thank you for all of you guys, too. I'll get the slide.
Good job.
Congratulations, everyone. Great job.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for that. First of all, thank you guys for supporting us throughout the year. For these last two years, it's been very difficult. That's why we're so alone for this proclamation, because we want to cover everything that has been done over the last two years. These amazing group of people do amazing jobs for us every day, so we're encouraging the Lee County residents to come out the 17th and 18th and enjoy our facilities. Thank you so much, your regard.
Yeah, thank you, Mac. Thank you and the whole team.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Commissioner Rain, would you like to present the last ceremony?
I would, thank you very much. Carolyn Johnson and all the people from PTO, please come up.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming. So I'm gonna read the resolution, then we'll obviously take a picture like you just saw, and you'll say a few words, that'd be great. So Board of County Commissioners, resolution. Whereas Pathways to Opportunity has been serving Fort Myers community for 10 years, providing invaluable support and resources to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Whereas PTO has positively impacted the lives of 223 individuals, offering comprehensive life skill development programs aimed at enhancing independence, promoting inclusion, fostering personal growth, whereas approximately 14,000 students in exceptional student education in Lee County School District highlighted the significant need for specialized support and services. Whereas PTO has been a beacon of hope and empowerment, offering tailored programs and initiatives such as financial literacy, training, employment, support, and community engagement. Whereas PTO has demonstrated unwavering dedication to its mission of creating pathways to independence and opportunities for individuals with ADD, and consistently strive to break down the barriers and promote exclusivity. Whereas there are 22,372 individuals on the pre-remobilization waitlist for the agencies for personal with disability services in our region, underscoring the critical demand for the types of services and support that PTO provides. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners proclaims June 18th as Pathways to Opportunity Day, and urges all residents to join and recognize the significant contributions of PTO to our community and celebrating the achievements of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Let us continue to support and uplift one another as we work together in more inclusive and compassionate society. Duly executed by our Chairman, Mike Greenwell, on the 18th of June.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning. Bruce, you see that?
Hi. How you doing?
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
One more?
One more.
Official.
Oh, the official one, yeah.
All right. One, two, and three. One more.
Thank you so much.
Good picture, please. You're welcome.
Good morning. Nice to see you guys. Nice to see you.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
Congratulations, that's awesome. I love seeing the new stores going.
My pleasure. How are you?
Awesome.
Thank you, Commissioners and Commissioner Rain for this opportunity to speak today. On behalf of Goodwill Industries and Pathways to Opportunity, our Board of Directors, our staff, and our families here, we're very grateful for this proclamation recognizing our 10 years of service to the Fort Myers community. Goodwill Industries of Southwest Florida's mission is to provide life-changing opportunities for individuals with disabilities and disadvantages in our local community. To this effort, our program, Pathways to Opportunity, has been dedicated to supporting individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities, positively impacting over 223
At this time, we will take up the recap. There is one item to defer.
lives through comprehensive life skills and development programs.
Consent item number 53 will be heard on August 6th.
Our initiatives such as financial literacy, training, employment support, and community
Is there a motion? In a second?
Who wants to refer?
Second. Okay, I have a motion to defer from Commissioner Rain, a second from Commissioner Hammond.
engagement have been instrumental in fostering independence and promoting inclusion. With approximately 14,000 students in exceptional student education in Lee County and over 22,000
At this time, I will, would anyone like to speak on item number 53 at this time?
individuals on the waitlist for services, the need for our programs is more critical
Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I have a motion from Commissioner Rain, a second from Commissioner Hammond.
than ever. Your recognition today reinforces our mission and commitment to breaking down the barriers
Any discussion? No discussion? Any objections? No objections?
and creating a community where individuals with disabilities can just live, not just
Passes four to zero unanimously. At this time, we will move to the consent agenda.
live, but thrive. As we celebrate this milestone, we are also looking to the future.
Commissioner Hammond, do you have any items to pull?
The need for disability services like Pathways to Opportunity and the programs we provide
I have none.
Commissioner Pendergrass, any items to pull?
None.
are growing, and we are focused on our mission with it.
Commissioner Rain?
None.
And I have none.
Your continued support is vital in helping us to make a lasting impact.
We will move to public comment on the consent agenda.
Thank you once again for this honor and for your ongoing commitment to our cause.
Would anyone like to speak on the consent agenda? Good morning, Marsha Ellis.
Together, we can create pathways for all.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marsha Ellis for the record, and today I am giving public comment on items 6, 15, and
Thank you.
26. So item 6 is the approval of the land exchange with Corkscrew Grove Limited Partnership. And I very much enjoyed the invocation this morning where the speaker asked for social justice in this community, because I think that this land swap is the perfect opportunity for that to come forward. So basically, there is a swap between a parcel that is fronting Corkscrew Road that was part of the settlement and with a parcel that is fronting State Road 82 to the north. The opportunity to leverage those properties for public good is immense. For instance, the State Road 82 property, we know that there's need for public utilities in that area. We know that there is a water shortage in that area, and we also know that there is a dearth of commercial. The phasing of this project could also be another tool in which the county's partnerships leverage resources for the greater good, not just the service of more luxury development. Next item is the approval of the CDBGDR Long Term Recovery Group. In this item, we have several million dollars, I think it's over $2 million, and what really has struck me in this is that no payments will be issued directly to survivors. So again, this is an administrative item where we're seeing more monies allocated for support being monies flowing to actual survivors. So I'm just pointing that out with this particular item. And that is with the Long Term Recovery Group, which is faith-based, nonprofit, community-based, private sector, and volunteer agencies. The last item I'm speaking about is the amendment to the HUD 2020 and 2022. Again, these are administrative actions for more funding for the administration of funds without it being direct, let's just say it's sort of indirect benefit to the people who are recovering or the folks who are in need of these services. I'm just wondering how much of that administrative could be pared down to get an actual benefit? And when I look at this, you know, we're going back a couple of years, so you would expect those monies to be rolling into people's pockets rather than caught up in that administrative limbo. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Does anyone else wish to speak on the consent agenda at this time?
I move the balance of the consent.
I think we have one more.
Oh.
Anyone else want to speak on the consent agenda? Come on out. Sorry.
Good morning. I would like to comment on item 7 regarding the Animal Care Trust Fund. I noticed in the backup material two things. That that trust fund and the next item will have approximately $1.4 million in it, and item 7 is an adjustment, I think, to the administrative code in regards to a basic audit versus an annual audit, and I just have a couple of questions. One, some clarification on that. Two, is that something you want to audit less, given some of the concerns we've heard recently regarding the animal services provided in Lee County? And I don't know, to me, $1.4 million's enough to worry about, but I don't know what the other type of audit is, if that will be sufficient to make sure the funds are used correctly. And my other question is, is this with the approval of your independent auditors, will this jeopardize anything, or do they not audit that to begin with? I get concerned when I see lessening oversight and audit abilities on funds, even donated, because we have a fiduciary responsibility as the county to make sure they're correctly administered. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, would anyone else like to speak on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Anyone like to make a motion?
Move the balance. I could have county staff respond to number 7 about the audit, the reason for the change of the review.
And I'll second the motion for approval.
Okay.
Second for the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, you recognize.
Yes, the clerk of courts spoke to us about the audit. They do it annually. There's been no issues over the last five years. They recommend putting it into a regular cycle like our other audits, so it'll still get audited, it'll still have the same process that it's had before, it just doesn't need to be annual because there's been no issues. He didn't see any issues, and that was his recommendation to move it to the normal audit cycle.
And that funding from that is from donations of people from a state's passing. They donate to animal services, and that's the money that's in that account now, it's not from tax, general tax.
Yes, that is correct, and there's specific uses for those dollars that are outlined in the ordinance.
Right, thank you.
Anything further? Okay, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any other discussion? I see no further discussion. Any objections? No objections, it passes four to zero unanimously. That concludes the consent agenda. All right, at this time, I would like to, we will convene as the Board of Port Commissioners of Lee County Port Authority. I would like to recognize our Port Authority attorney to introduce the item. Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board members. Item number one is a request to amend the lease agreement out at the hangar building at Page Field. The purpose of this lease amendment is to allow the forestry service to house a helicopter on-site so that it is in a better position to serve the needs of Lee County should that situation arise. We respectfully request approval. This item sitting as the Port Authority, and then your next item is identical to this, but we'll need you to approve it sitting as the Board of County Commissioners, but if you would take the item separately, we would appreciate it.
Okay, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none. I will call for public comment. Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any objections? Any further discussion? Approved unanimously, four to zero.
I'd also recognize Steve Pendergrass here, the former Board Director, and Brian Monocle, so thank you for being here, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we will reconvene as the Lee County Board of County Commissioners. We will now, I'm sorry, we will now reconvene as Lee County Board Commissioners and move the agenda, move to the agenda. Mr. County Manager, please introduce item number two on administrative agenda. I don't have a second on here. Is there a second on that part?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item number.
I want to do it separate, so.
Yes.
Yes, okay, we'll do it as a Board of County Commissioners now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item number two is identical to item number one. You're only approving it now as the Board of County Commissioners. So same report, same recommendation, same request to ask if you would move approval.
I'll ask for public comment again.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Any questions or anything from the staff?
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have approval from Commissioner Rain, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? Any objections? Item moves four to zero unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so I think I have an item numbered. Do you have anything further?
Not on that item, Mr. Chairman, but if you're ready to move to item number three on the administrative agenda, that's our item as well.
Yep, we'll move to item number three.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item number three deals with the selection of members to the Value Adjustment Board. In the past, this has been a chairman's appointment. Due to a recent opinion rendered by the Department of Revenue, we now need the board to elect two members to the Value Adjustment Board and then also elect a chairman. So if you would please handle those items separately, the first item being an election of board members to the Value Adjustment Board.
Okay, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment.
Mr. Chairman, we need two volunteers.
Mr. Chairman, I move we elect you, the chairman, and Commissioner Pendergrass?
I would say Sandelli, he's not here. I mean.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I move we elect Chair Greenwell and Commissioner Sandelli.
I will volunteer for it. Ray won't be here after.
Well, then I think we should have a campaign. I want to hear who's gonna.
I object to this motion.
I've done it for the last four years, I'd be happy to do it again, so wouldn't do that to Ray.
Okay, so we're gonna have.
Okay, so let's do Greenwell and Pendergrass then. I would have done it, I actually don't mind the position, but I am gonna be on the canvassing board this year, and there are several meetings that the VAB conflicts with the canvassing board, and so that's where I'm at.
Okay, so.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
No, we got a second, okay.
Kevin's hiding over there.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond. We'll be appointing Mr. Pendergrass and Commissioner Greenwell. We have a second from Commissioner Rain. Do we have any objections? I need to call for public comment on that one, too.
Yes, please.
Would anyone like to make public comment, defend the chairman, and say that he shouldn't be on this board?
I need it.
I see no public comment, so I will close public comment. We have a motion to approve, Mr. Hammond, Commissioner Rain. Any objections? I object. Passes three to one.
Mr. Chairman, then you're really not gonna like the next item, which is we need the board to elect a chairman to the Value Adjustment Board out of those two members that just won the election.
I would like, oh, did we do the one where he can make motions yet?
Mr. Chairman, for point of reference, the item allowing the chairman to make motions was approved as part of the consent agenda.
I would like a motion to appoint the chairman to be, Commissioner Pendergrass? And do I need a vice chairman?
No, sir.
Just a chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
I still rate, Ray would have been a good idea, but whatever.
I should have did that one with Ray? Is that what you just said? No, okay. All right, any out, any public comment on that? Seeing none, I will close public comment. So we have a motion from Mr. Greenwell, a second from Commissioner Rain, was it?
I think Hammond seconded.
Hammond, okay. I'm sorry, there's a lot going on today. For Mr. Hammond, any objections? Seeing none, passes unanimously, four to zero. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Now we're at item number four?
Yes, sir.
Is that where we're at? Okay. Mr. Harner, please introduce item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to authorize commitment of local government opportunity funding affordable housing. I'd like to ask Ms. Mickey Rizolsky to present the items.
Good morning, Mickey Rizolsky with Community Development. This is a request to authorize a $500,000 grant from the Affordable a 500,000 investment from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to Autumn Palm Lee LLC in support of their Florida Housing Finance Corporation application for housing credit financing. The funding commitment will be in the form of a zero-interest loan with a five-year term for the construction of 78 multifamily units for rental by extremely low and low-income households. The project is located at 4941 Bayshore Road in North Fort Myers. This commitment demonstrates local support of the project, which gives it preference in the Florida Housing Finance Corporation's competitive application process. I'm here to answer any questions, if there are any.
At this time, does staff have any, a board have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I will open up for public comment. Marcia Ellis?
Thanks. Marcia Ellis, for the record. So I think that this is a great move forward to bring in some targeted affordable housing for those who are most in need of it. I also appreciate the clarity of the language of the way that the loan agreement and the instrument is prepared and drafted. I found it pretty digestible and easy to understand. I'm also appreciating the term of the compliance period of 99 years, which I think gives some assurance that the these funds are going to give a durable reduction of the housing burden and provide affordable housing to those who most need it for the longest period of time. So I very much appreciate that. I'm also going to point out that the construction cost per unit is estimated at 343,832, which would be subsidized by a little over $4,400 by Lee County. So I think it's important to keep an eye on those anticipated costs, to look at ways that reconciles them with other, let's say, CDBDGR documents, and reviewing other applications that are coming in on those funds over the summer in order to inform decision-making and, quite frankly, for the public to be able to give oversight and informed public input about the true cost of breeding housing to the community. So I appreciate the way this document is written and the intent of what's being brought forward. Thank you.
I think, Ms. Ellis, anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Are there any objections? Did I miss that? Did you say second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me correct the record then. Okay, I have a motion to approve, Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Any, any further discussion? Anyone, any objections? Passed unanimously four to zero. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item number five. I am abstaining from voting on number, item number five. On the administrative item number five, due to a pending land use case, I will file the conflict of interest from eight B with the minutes office at this time. So I will file this and leave the room, and I'd like to turn over the gavel to the vice chair.
Thank you, sir.
I think we should do that, redo the baffing since he's gone.
Okay, well, onto item number five. Who would introduce the item? County manager? County attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, as you recall, at the, I believe it was your last board meeting, the board directed the chairman to negotiate an extension of the employment agreement with the hearing officer. Due to the chairman's conflict, he defaulted to the first vice chair. It's my understanding that Commissioner Wayne and the HECs met, and that there is a draft agreement that was circulated to you for your review. That agreement carries out what I believe to be the intent of the board, which was to extend the employment agreement for the hearing officer until October of 2027. Commissioner.
Thank you very much. So that's the item. The-
I move the recommendation for the hearing examiner for extension to 20 something.
I'll second that.
A motion, a second. I'll open it to public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up here. Any other discussion?
Just want to say thank you to the HECs and her staff who do an amazing job every day over in the hearing examiner's office, and thank you for being there, and thank you for staying with Lee County, so.
I want to agree with that. You know, we give her great reviews every year. She's done a great job for us. She has a, definitely a very thankless, tough job to evaluate all the land use cases, and she does it with excellence, so.
I agree with your comments. Any other discussion? Any objection? None. Motion carries out.
Sir, if we can recall the chairman?
I'm going to go get the chairman.
Okay, one.
Goodness.
Okay, Mr. Harner, please introduce, introduce item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to approve an STA for North Lee County Water Treatment Plant Expansion. I'd like to ask Mr. Paul Flores to present the item.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Paul Flores, Utilities. Administrative item number six is to seek approval for a supplemental task authorization with Tetra Tech to evaluate an expansion feasibility study for the North Lee County Water Treatment Plant in the amount of 442,985 dollars. The report will assess the feasibility of expanding North Lee County Water Treatment Plant to 20 million gallons per day. This study is similar to an item that was brought before the board on May 7th for the Cochrue Water Treatment Expansion up to 20 million gallons. Both are trying to expand both of these plants up to 20 million gallons per day. They will address the public need for water in both the northern area for this particular item, and of course, the Cochrue for the southeast portion of the county. Chairman, the last item I'd like to note is that Utilities is seeking board approval to waive section three of the Lee County Procurement Ordinance 92 dash 22 for this feasibility study. Waiving the section would allow Tetra Tech to be able to bid on the design and construction services for this future project. Chairman, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Staff have any question, I mean, board have any question for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call for public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion?
I would like to thank staff, Utilities, for moving this forward because it's obviously we expand north and east. This obviously is definitely a key element, so thank you for staff working on this, bringing this project forward.
Thank you. And I would like to make a quick comment on as well. I know there's some concern about drying up wells out there in that area from, from this project, and I'm sure that will be addressed or is being addressed at this time, right? Okay. Okay, so any other comments for staff? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Are there any objections? Okay, seeing none. Motion approves four to zero unanimously. That concludes the administrative agenda. At this time, we'll move to the public hearing agenda. There are three public hearings today. County Attorney, please introduce public hearing number one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Adams with the County Attorney's Office. This hearing has been properly advertised, and I have both the affidavit publication and the cost estimates through clerk. Rob Price with DOT is going to briefly explain the project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT. This project is an extension of the county's eastbound right turn lane on Pine Island Road to turn south on Veterans Parkway. The turn lane's currently 205 feet, and it's going to be extended to 560 feet in length. The county's paying the developer, Pine Island West Owner LLC, to construct the turn lane at a significant savings to the county. All criteria for public-private cooperation in construction of county roads under section 336 dot 71 Florida statutes have been met, and we are here for any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions for staff this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call for public comment. Would anyone like to make public comment on item number one? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Are there any further discussion? Any objections? Passed unanimously four to zero. Please introduce item number two.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Amanda Swindle at the County Attorney's Office. I have your second and third public hearings this morning, and both have been legally advertised. Public hearing item number two is to approve a development agreement with the Friends of Boca Grand, which is a longtime nonprofit partner of the counties that operates out of our community center on the island. The Friends has proposed major improvements to the community center, including the construction of a new auditorium. These improvements will be 100% financed and constructed by the Friends of Boca Grand, subject to supervision and approval by Facilities Construction Management. Ms. Marta Howell from the Friends is here to talk to you a little bit about the project, but from staff's perspective, this has been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office, by Facilities, County Lands, Parks and Rec, and the Department of Community Development, with recommendations of approval from all. This item was also heard by the LPA and, again, got a recommendation of approval.
Okay. We have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will open up for public, oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to make the presentation?
Thank you. I'm Marta Howell, the CEO for Friends of Boca Grand Community Center, and we are very honored to be the first organization to count, to partner with the county in this way on a development agreement. I'd simply say that this project has been a project that's come from the grassroots up. We surveyed the community a couple of years ago to get their input and received over 600 responses supporting the Friends to take leadership and to do some improvements at our community center. We talked with the 35-plus not-for-profits that use the center to get their input in terms of their dreams and desires for what they would like, and incorporated that all into a plan that we're very proud to partner with you on. I would simply say that out of that process, we have developed some goals and values to guide our decision-making, and those include to honor the character, scale, and history of Boca Grand, to maintain the maximum amount of green space possible, to assure architecture is consistent and complementary to the existing campus and the neighborhood, to understand the needs of the 30-plus not-for-profit organization users, and assure meaningful realignment and enhancement of their organizations, to serve the needs of all ages and all demographics, to work with the island school to meet their current and future needs, to thoughtfully replace the auditorium to meet both the Americans with Disabilities Act and Federal Emergency Management Agency regulations, and improve the AV technology, HVAC, and theater experience, to do a phased construction approach over three years to accommodate the organizations and to continue their, their activities during the season, and finally, to continue a collaborative and cooperative relationship with Lee County. Again, we're very honored to, to be in this position. I can tell you that we started our fundraising in January with a goal of 15 million, and we're just shy, 10,000 shy of 16 and a half million right now, with over 360 donors. So we think it's going to be a goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Move the item.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any other discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Howell, for coming down and speaking. I guess I'm glad you touched on about how successful this has been in the last, basically, six months. I was out there last week, and I learned that it already suppressed their, surpassed their original goal of the 15 million dollar donation. So the community's so supportive of this, it's going to be such a great addition to the island already, which is such a jewel. So it's just going to be a great, another item feature here on the island of Boca Grand. So thank you, and you know, Commissioner Wayne's been involved, too, out there, but this is, I'm, it's really so impressive to see the community come together and so supportive with this and fund this whole project themselves.
Thank you, Commissioner.
They did this a couple of years ago with the lighthouse, too. I remember the lighthouse remodeling years ago, did the same thing about five years ago, so.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing no other comments. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Wayne.
It was him. He moved approval.
He made the motion. He made the second.
I got it backwards. Okay, I'm sorry. I wrote it down wrong, too. How about that? Motion to approve from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Thank you for correcting. I mean, Commissioner Hammond.
Yeah, no.
I appreciate that. We have any other discussion? Any objections? Seeing none, motion moves unanimously. Please introduce item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three is a public hearing to adopt an ordinance to establish the Ibis Landing Community Development District pursuant to Florida statute. This was formerly a community development district known as Copperhead that was dissolved by this board in 2022. And if you have any questions, I believe Representative, the group is here.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
Nope.
Do you want to make a presentation?
I'm prepared to make a motion unless he wants to make a presentation.
Okay. I'll open up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We have a motion.
Make the motion for approval, please.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner, a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Any objections? No objections. Passed unanimously four to zero. That concludes public hearings today. We will move to their, to walk-ons and carryovers. There is a walk-on. Mr. County Manager, would you please introduce the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the approved submitting application and designating coordinator for FY 23 JAG grant. I'd like to ask Mr. Winton to present the item.
Commissioners, this is an annual grant from the Department of Justice. What this does is approves, the application is due June 25th, that's why we're walking it on, and also designated Cape Coral as the coordinating agency for this. The funds go toward law enforcement and human services primarily.
We have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Any objections? No objections. Item moves four to zero unanimously. We will now move to Commissioner Items. Mr. Hammond, do you have any items?
None today.
Commissioner Pendergrass, do you have any items?
No items.
Commissioner Wayne, do you have any items?
No items.
I have three items. First, I would like to discuss and request concurrence to appoint Jennifer Roth as administrator of the Department of Health of Lee County. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here, if you have any questions for me.
We have any questions for Jennifer at this time? Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Does anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Any further discussion from the board?
Congratulations.
I, congratulations, yeah. Wish you the best of luck. This is, you know, it's funny, but going back just a couple of years ago during the pandemic, we became like best of friends with Angela, our, our health coordinator, health department coordinator at that time, and excited to see that she's going on to new and exciting opportunities. And Jennifer, you did such a great job working with us throughout the pandemic, too, and, you know, that really forged a bond between the county and the, and the health department that, you know, I think is still there today, and so really excited to continue to work with you all.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Listen, I'd love to congratulate you and welcome you to the job. Angeles, I'm going to miss you greatly. Had the privilege of meeting Angela back in my days in San Diego. We dealt on water quality. Go back a long, long way. We had a lot of different conversations. We had a lot of different conversations and certainly bunked down together during Ian. So, I wish you all the best.
Okay. So, at this time, no public comment. So, we have a motion to approve Commissioner Hammond... I'm sorry, Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any objections? Seeing none. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Four to zero unanimously. Okay, we have a second item. My second item is to request for Peg Elmore, President and CEO of Career Source Southwest Florida, for the new local workforce development area designation, adding Monroe County to the region. I will make a motion. Do I have a second to approve? We have a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. I have a motion to approve. I have a second from Mr. Pendergrass. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item for public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. So, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Greenwell, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So, any objections? No objections. Passes four to zero. My... Other item... I have one more item. I will make a motion. I'm sorry that I skipped here. Is there anyone... I will make a motion. Motion to approve County Commissioner. Is there anyone in public wishes to make a comment? My last item, to reinstate Vice Chair Brett Kettler to the Career Source Southwest Florida Board of Directors. I apologize. I'm going to repeat that so we get it right on the record. My last item, to reinstate Vice Chair Brett Kettler to the Career Source Southwest Florida Board of Directors. I will make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wayne. Anyone wish to speak of public comment? Nope. Any objections? No objections. Passes unanimously four to zero. That concludes... We will move on to committee appointments. Commissioner Hammond, do you have any committee appointments?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Pendergrass, do you have any?
Yes, I have four new and reappointments. So, the new appointment of Kevin Bessler, the CBGDR Affordable Housing, reappointment of Walter Ferguson, Housing Finance Authority, reappointment of Jennifer Evans to roadway landscaping, reappointment of Patrick Hayes to East Mullock Water Control District. Second.
Okay. Motion to approve. We have a second. Any objections? Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any objections? No objections. All right. Commissioner Wayne, do you have any questions?
I do. I have two new appointments. CDBGR Affordable Housing, it's Shane Spring. CDBGR Infrastructure Planning, it's Sarah Owen.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Wayne. Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. I have appointments as well. There they are. Okay. I have one appointment. Angela Fishler.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Call a vote on that last.
I'm sorry. I'm jumping aboard. I've got millions of papers up here. I'm jumping forward, I'm sorry. So, we have a motion from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Mr. Hammond. Any objections? No objections. Passes unanimously four to zero. I have one appointment. Angela Fishler. Fishler. CDBGDR Affordable Housing Evaluation Committee. I make the motion. Do we have any?
Second.
We have a second. Any objections? No objections. Or approve. Okay. Beliefful. Sorry, I want to make sure I don't miss anything here. All right. Okay, now we move to County Manager Items. Mr. Harner, do you have any items?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we'd like to discuss and receive direction from the board on a number of parks on Fort Myers Beach, those being Crescent Beach, Bowditch Point Park, and the Fort Myers Beach Pier. I'd like to ask Mr. Robert Cody to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Good morning, Commissioners. What you'll see on the screen right now is Crescent Beach Family Park, and you'll have two options. The first option is to restore the park as it was, pre-hurricane Ian. That provides you with the landscape buffer, added vegetation to the sand dunes, and two modular restroom facilities. Now, option two provides new artificial turf with impervious sidewalks. It restores the landscape and buffer, but it provides you with a little more greenery and a little more covered area. So, you... If you look at the screen, you look at the covered areas in option one versus those in option two. And in option two, there's no longer the volleyball courts. But it also provides for a multipurpose site, which is central, and that's out of the three figures on option two.
Okay. Staff have any... Board have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Wayne?
Director, where are we funding this from?
Well, if we go with option one, that's FEMA reimbursement through PA. Option two, I knew yours was going to go there, Commissioner. Option two, we would look into TDT dollars and different alternatives for option two in conjunction with FEMA reimbursement.
I'd rather move option two.
Option two?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item... Option number two from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond. At this time, I will open up for public comment. Morning, Marcia.
Sorry about... Marcia Ellis, for the record. I'm just concerned with the artificial turf because it has been implicated in PIFAs in terms of releasing PIFAs into the environment. And we do have an eco-sensitive site here where we could anticipate there being interaction with families, children, et cetera. And I just would like to point that out because I know there is concern for PIFAs in terms of an emerging contaminant. I would just hate to see the county walk into a situation where they're trying to do good and they end up taking on a liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Public comment? Good morning.
Joyce Campana. Option two just makes me want to ask, why do you want to put something artificial on a natural beach? Doesn't water drain better with natural materials or sand? And looking at the two items and two options up there, it looks like the most expensive difference is the artificial turf for a million bucks more. Is there something on option two that I'm missing? I don't know. But artificial turf just is gross. Why would you consider that at a beach? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wayne on item number two. We have a second from Commissioner Hammond. Would the board have any other discussion?
I just want to point out, so option two for staff, that also gives us the shade structures. So, people will be staying there for people that want to stay out of the sun, direct sunlight for that reason. That's the difference. One of the big differences between one and two, correct?
Correct.
Which is probably about most of the cost difference. So, it's the shade structures.
It's a combination of the turf and the shade structures. That's correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I'd also like to ask staff, even though there's additional cost on this upfront, in the long run, there will be less maintenance of the facility at that because of the artificial turf.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Correct. Based on the usage that we... It'd be a multipurpose site. So, if there is any events there on that site, it's more durable and it's less maintenance on it after those post-events.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the drain is issued. It's accommodated in the design. So, it will drain appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or remarks for staff? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion from Commissioner Wayne to approve item number two. We have a second, Commissioner Hammond. Any objections? Seeing none. Item number two passes unanimously. That concludes County Manager Items. I'm sorry, you had two?
There's two more parts to that.
Not on my list, sir.
There's a total of four slides. This is number two. And this slide here is just an update to Bowditch Park. And it's just showing that we will do renovations to those buildings just due to hurricane damage. But in the interim, we have added temporary restrooms that are both ADA accessible and for our general population. They were added about two weeks ago to continue to facilitate the needs of our beachgoers at that end of the park, at that end of the beach, rather.
Okay. Any questions or comments from staff? Commissioner Hammond?
Yeah, could I ask one? I had a question on this. I know we've added these modular restrooms at both this park and Lynn Hall Park as well. Do we have the opportunity to add any temporary, like, showering-type facilities? Like, you know, I mean, a lot of times you want to wash the sand off before you jump back in the car. And it seems like the plumbing would be there for it because obviously, you're going to get water to the modular bathroom somehow. How hard would it be to create something like that where you could wash your feet off at least or something like that?
If I'm not mistaken, we have that already attached to our modular units down at Crescent and Lynn Hall, but we'll look at Bowditch.
Okay, yeah. Thanks. I just try to think about the guest experience. I mean, we're getting ready to go into another tourist season. I think more people will come back this tourist season even than they did last tourist season because, you know, people are assuming that we're recovering. And we are. We're recovering at a great rate. So, I just want to make sure that it's ready for the guests, you know, and for all of us who use it, too. I mean, my wife and kids and I, we went down to the beach a couple of weekends ago and had a great time, but just was looking for some of those comforts that you miss, you know, that we used to have with all the facilities that were out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Any other comments this time? Okay, I will open up for public comment. Anyone like to make public comment on this item? I'm sorry. Do you have something? Okay. No? Okay. I won't make public comment. Anyone want to make a comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, this was just an update.
I'm sorry.
This was just an update.
We don't need a motion. We don't need to go through... Okay, so that's it.
We have one more.
Okay, one more update.
Now, this one, we will need a motion for.
We don't need a motion for this one.
What you'll see here on the screen is Fort Myers Beach Pier. And this is one of our renderings of what we look to see in the future. Now, the next slide will detail what our options are. First option would be to build it as it was pre-Ian. That's exactly the same. The pier will be as it was pre-Ian. Option two widens the pier by four feet. So, it'll go from eight feet in width to 12 feet. And option three is a combination of widening the pier and adding length to it. So, the pier would go from eight feet in width to 12 feet, and it'll go from 585 feet in length to 1,000 feet. And what you'll see on these, the difference would be is option three, where we have a proposed cost to the county at $11 million. Option two would be a $1 million increase, but it would provide the widening of the pier in the capacity that we've heard stakeholders speak to.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may... Mr. Cody, can you also talk about the length of time for each of those? One and two are pretty consistent, but three, that timeframe isn't...
Absolutely. So, if you look at the design and permitting, this does not include construction. Construction will be an additional 12 to 18 months. But if you look at design, it'll take pretty much 21 to 27 months just for the design and permitting stage. And option three, it's 21 to 36 months, but we're leaning more towards that 36-month timeframe due to the lengthening of that pier and potential permitting challenges that we would be faced with.
Questions or comments to staff at this time?
The original pier way it was, what's the total length then? Was that... How many feet?
485 feet. No, I'm sorry. 585 feet. And we would add 415 feet to it.
Right, so, yeah, so it'd be added 415. So, it would almost double the length of it for this option three then, right? My other question is, has the Town of Fort Myers Beach been involved with this? As far as they see what we're doing with this? Have they given any input, the Town of Fort Myers Beach, at all?
Mr. Chair, we have spoken to the committee. They have presented to us what they would like to see, and we spoke to Councilmember Woodson as well. Now, this does not encompass or include everything that they discussed, but it does include the things that the board has directed us to move forward with.
So, option two, $6 million extra. Option three, 17... What's the funding source for option two or option three?
Option two is a million-dollar difference. It would cost an additional $1 million. That would more than likely be TDT funding. And option three is 11 and 1/2 million dollars, and that would also be TDT reserves.
TDT reserves, okay. We have the funds. I was just trying to make sure that's where the funds were coming from.
Correct.
I had a question on the construction schedule for it. You know, just because I want to understand all the scenarios here, looks like the duration for design and permitting is going to be the same, very similar anyways, for option one and option two. But option three, obviously, it looks like that's more variable there. Is there a way to phase it? If you wanted to go, is there a way to build back what we had? And then maybe a second phase that would be the addition later down the road?
Yes, sir. When we construct a pier... I'm saying we as if I'm building it. But once the piers construct it, it'll be built to where we can extend it. So, if we want to go long-term, if we just want to build as it was pre-Ian, we can build to that capacity with the ability to add on at a future date. So, that is an option.
That would be the eight foot, though, originally. So, if you do 12, you would only do 12.
No, we're talking about the length, not the width. The width is what we intend to build.
Option one is eight foot. Why this?
Yeah. I mean, is there a scenario where... To clarify, is there a scenario where you could build option two as a first phase and then have a potential future phase where you could then lengthen it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Would you... See, that's the other thing, though. If you had to construct a phase to lengthen it, would you still have to close the entire pier down? Or could a portion of it stay open during that construction period?
EHPH.
Good morning. EHPH, various construction management. So, if we choose option number two, we can keep it open during construction because most of the construction for phase two, to make it longer, would be from the water side.
Okay.
Yeah. But we would be coordinating with that contractor where the staging area would be, but we can keep it open.
Because my concern would be we would get it open, and then we'd have to close it right back down again for construction. And I don't think that that's something the public would want.
There is no need. Maybe it would be a small period of time when you connect the phase two with phase one, but during construction, it should not be closed. We can keep it open.
All right. All right. All right. All right. Those are some questions I had. Yeah. Commissioner, one?
Can someone potentially, I know it's a TDC funds, but this would come out of attractions, I gather?
Mr. Whitten?
I know we could go to legislative finding, but attraction budget?
No, the excess reserves, Commissioner, would be our recommendation.
So the excess reserve, TDC, all get broken down between?
It's a, yeah, it's a common pot of money.
And what's that balance again?
I'm sorry.
The excess reserves, what's that balance again?
I don't have, I can get that to you, Commissioner. It certainly would cover this. I don't have an exact amount for you, but I can get that to you later today.
I think, I remember from last month, it was around 24 million excess reserves that were not designated for you. But again, I don't know what it is today, so.
Okay.
I know it must have been.
Just was curious. It certainly seems, option two seems to be the prudent way to go about it. I don't know what type of reserves we have, and obviously the other issues that we do have excess reserves, if it is 24, we'd use half of them. It's just a big exhaustion of those reserves. So I like your option, Commissioner Hammond, about building it two sections. It's good, you know. So I do like the option of two being wider, so it gives people more ability to walk and not have the close proximity as you're walking by somebody. But option three, not having as much information as I do, I struggle with.
A question. Option three, is there more, since it's longer in length, I have two questions for that. As far as maintenance durability, is there going farther out in the Gulf, obviously the water's getting deeper, is it going to be more prone for more damage in the future for any future storms? Since we're going farther out in the current, and the second thing was, is there more restroom and facilities on the pier? Since you have more capacity of people due to length being longer, it's obviously going to get more travel, it's longer in length, so some people may get all the way out there, then you need to drink some water. Are there going to be restrooms out there?
So the first part, if we make it longer, it would be designed to withstand any, the wind or any wave actions. So that would be designed to handle this. Regarding restrooms, we have restrooms available in Crescent Beach and Lynn Hall, because we are in the process to design Lynn Hall now, so there'll be additional restrooms in this area.
Okay, thank you. I understand your concern too, Commissioner. I had the same question too about the $11 million extra cost, but I think we have opportunity here to build something really big and stand out and bring a new huge attraction to the county if we have the funds for it. Based upon my last time I checked a few months ago, we had the funds into the TDC reserves that were not designated or funded related. And I understand also the concern about we could add the length, but I think, I didn't ask the cost for that, but maybe we could ask if you did option two, how much would it cost later on to do it later? Sometimes I've seen currently in road projects where you try to do that later, it costs twice as much to do it afterwards because you got to bring, you got to put up a bid again, you got to bring the crews back again, and you're starting over again. It's a large cost of that. So I'm not sure if you did option two and then added later, it would still be a $11 million difference, or would it be $20 million difference? I don't know if staff can relate to that. Ehab, or staff, can you, how much would that cost more? If you did option two, then later, a year later, you wanted to build it out, even though permitted for that through Army Corps and everything, how much would it cost? Do you have an estimate for that?
It's hard to predict what that cost will be, but for sure, that cost will increase. I'm not sure what year. Usually, it's going to be 20% cost increase per year, but that can be different.
In my experience in these type of projects, that, you make a great point, Commissioner, because what ultimately happens is that it has to go back out for bid, obviously, because of length of time, obviously. And the other thing that's very obvious here is that construction company has to mobilize again, which can be a lot in a project, in a big deal. So I think you may be looking at more than 20% increase. So I think the board at this time really needs to consider all options. You know, in other words, if we're going with two, I think it makes sense for me to look at maybe adding it bigger down the road. Seems safer than us, but we have to understand it's going to be additional cost. If we're willing to spend the additional dollars now to build something grand, now would be the time to do it, because it would definitely save tremendous amount of money. So that's my two cents. Would you agree with that? Yeah, so, yes, sir. Commissioner Wayne?
My struggle, and I appreciate Commissioner Pendigras' this, my struggle honestly is we're making a decision without knowing exactly what do we have in reserves, what are we going to deplete, what's left over, and not being on TDC, I don't know what other things may be on the horizon as a result of the storm. So that's why I hesitate with option three.
So I'll tell you where my head's at, too. I mean, I'm actually comfortable with saying yes to option two based on the information that I have today. I think that, you know, wouldn't add a significant amount of time to getting the pier back. Look, my number one goal, and I've been really vocal about it, is I want, I don't want to go to the beach anymore and see just the pilings sticking out. I want to see the pier back. I want people to be able to go out on that pier again and feel like they've gotten back, that we have rebuilt from Hurricane Ian when they get out to the beach. So I, the timeframe is important to me, so I'm ready to say yes to option two today. That being said, I have done some looking around since this conversation has started about could we improve our pier and could we have a better-looking pier than we traditionally had. And there are communities out there that have some really nice piers. And you know what? We are a growing area with a growing population. We're going to continue to see tourism increase over the years. And I am very open-minded to a conversation about a bigger pier, a pier that would be, that would have some amenities that other communities have on their piers. I just don't, like Commissioner Ruane said, I don't feel like I have the information today to go ahead and hit the go button on that plan. So that's why I was asking, could we look at it in phases, maybe say yes and get going on the option that gets us something back quickly, and then have maybe a greater community conversation about the bigger part? That's just where my head's at.
Okay. Mr. Hunter, can you address that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have the number for the reserves. It's 40 million.
How much?
40 million.
40 million, okay. So, the 24 number, I think was, nevermind.
I have another question that some, maybe one of y'all can answer. If we chose item two with the understanding that we are, first, let me say this. If we choose item two, give me the timetable again. Item two, we can start construction at what time length compared to item three, because item three seems to be quite a bit longer before we can start construction. Is that right?
If you see the design and permitting is the third block on, in item number two, it'll be 21 to 27 months just for design and permitting. And then after that, it'll be 12 to 18 months for construction.
Okay. And the same for item three?
No, item three is 21 to 36 months with more of a 36-month timeframe for design and permitting due to the added length to the pier with an additional 12 to 18 months for construction.
So could there be an option to agree on item number two with knowing that we're going to continue to move, in other words, get it started as building item two and then adding item three when it's available for permitting? Would that be an option?
Well, I would have our facilities and construction direct to come up, but just in a thought process, I would recommend we design and permit for option three and build to two. In worst-case scenario, that way we have the design and permitting established.
That really answered my question. That's what I was concerned with.
I'd love to. Just trying to understand the difference in the nine months between two and three. What exactly in the permitting, I mean, you're going to go to the Army Corps of Engineers. I imagine for option two, is there something, I'm just trying to have an appreciation for the nine months.
So the difference between option two and three, the increase in time, because we need to do underwater survey to find out what kind of a soil, the depth of the water and all that. So that process takes time, and we have to also study what's under the water in this area, sea grass, any habitat, or any wildlife we're going to impact. So that, it takes time.
So it becomes a very big decision, obviously, for the board, because I think we all would love to see something bigger and grander, but what makes the most sense for Lee County at this point? And that's why I would be leaning towards option two myself at this time, so.
I feel a lot differently knowing there's $40 million in reserves as opposed to 24. Again, I don't have enough appreciation for what other things we may have to do with TDC excess reserves, but it certainly is the number-one attraction. I agree with Commissioner Hammond. I've been up to St. Pete a lot. I can't believe the traffic and the just activity on that pier itself. It's amazing, and they've built a lot along there to make that even more of an attraction. So again, the amenity's there. I feel better with $40 million in reserves, but I'm at a little disadvantage not knowing if we deplete 11. And again, this is over a three-year period of time. I don't think we're going to spend it right away, and we're obviously getting back on our feet.
That's what I was going to say. As far as the funding goes, the 40 million, obviously, is reassured. That's why I remember a few months ago, the number was great, but we're seeing an increase. Obviously, we're still missing a lot of beds, the hotels, the beaches, and sample, but that number's still going to continue to go up, I think, the reserves. We keep saying we have all these reserves while we wait for the rainy day. We have opportunity here to do something that's going to be there for the next 50 to 100 years to make really a statement in Lee County if you do a larger pier standout. Obviously, the new option two would be 12, it would be wider, but this really would be a huge draw, I think, for the region and for the beach, and it'd be a great amenity to add to what areas have been totally devastated over the last two years. I think I personally support option three. I know, I hate the timeline. I hate knowing it's going to be three years before we start seeing construction probably, but I think it'd be worth the wait to see that additional 415 feet to be there. We have the money for it, and this would be a great addition back in the community. I think over time, over the first five years of that being in place, I think we'll see that return back in the bed tax, just revenues, more of a draw down there now with Margaritaville and all that other projects coming on board of the beach, being rebuilding and getting our town hall rebuilt. So the time is the only struggle I have with it is the time.
I think you've convinced us all, Commissioner. I think it was a great discussion. And to be honest, I will make a motion to pick option three, if anyone would like to second.
You can use that news opportunity, I think, Commissioner Wayne from last meeting.
That Commissioner Wayne set up for us, and now the chairman can make a motion. I will make a motion to approve item number three.
It's unfortunate Commissioner Sandelli's not here, because I know he's down there every day, literally working with the Towne Ford Beach. I'm not sure where he is on this. I'd love to hear from him, but I will second your motion for option three.
Okay. I will open up for public comment at this time. Would someone like to make public comment on this item?
Joyce Campana, it seems to me we're talking about three issues at least. One, whether you go from eight feet wide to 12 feet wide. Okay. It gets a little crowded there. 12 feet would be okay. Then you're talking about going from 585 feet long to 1,000 feet long. Well, in that extra 400-some feet, what else do we see? It's more water. I mean, how much further out in the Gulf do you have to go per foot? I loved Fort Myers Beach Pier. I will never forget the first day I walked out on the pier and was in awe. But I don't think because we have 40 million in reserves, we ought to spend close to 25% of it. Why don't we put a Ferris wheel on the end of the option three while we're at it? I say that sarcastically, and I also say it seriously. What I'm hearing is, yes, it would be nice later on down the line to have more amenities along the pier. None of these address any amenities. It just addresses going further out, and I can assure you, I've never seen a construction project that big that isn't going to have some sort of cost overrun when you find out the pilings have to go through God knows what, and costs go up, or in the middle of construction, we get another hurricane Ian. Let's not forget, you know, I'm all for building it back. Bigger isn't always better, and I can't believe I'm saying that. But it isn't always. I can understand the width, but after a certain point, how far out into the water are you going to go? You can see the beautiful water. It's wildlife. You can fish at 1,000 feet. People were doing that on the existing pier. I understand and think it's a great option to go with option two and be able to build on it later. But I think we ought to be cognizant of some of our money and always wanting to be bigger and better and being assured that we will have more tourists and more tourism money. That's not what I'm hearing from the people I know in Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none? We have a motion? Yep, Commissioner Wayne?
Just for, and I appreciate the last comment, just for everyone's identification, St. Pete is 1,400 feet long. So just FYI, I look at the attraction. So this is still be 400 feet shorter than St. Pete's current pier. Again, it's the closest one I've been to from an amenity point of view and from the number of people that are on there. I can tell you, it certainly seems big, but it certainly seems like there's more than enough people on it to see that it's not really not occupied. It's really full. So that's just an issue. I just want to bring everyone's attention. The storms are going to be an issue at 1,000 feet, at 500 feet. It's the same issue. I think the real question we'll come to is as you're going through the construction aspect, to see exactly what challenges we might have in securing the pilings and securing the construction. That's really what we're going to do. I'm sure we get that information back. We might need to pivot and go backwards. I don't know. But just FYI, piers, it's not uncommon when you do the amenity the way they are and the attraction, St. Pete being the closest, is still 40% greater than what we remember.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, for the staff. What could we do in the way of information for people who are going to be looking at the wrecked pier for the next five to six years while we're under construction on this? Because, I mean, look, you know, as much as it'll be on the news and as much as we talk about it, you know, there will still be people who will go down to the pier who will not have heard any of this, and they'll want to know, hey, what's going on with this? I would love for us to be able to put up some information boards saying, here's what the board is working on, here's what's coming, you know, and here's the timeline, start to set some of the expectations and help people, you know, communicate with them about what's happening here. You know, it'd be neat to do the same thing with the bathrooms at Lynn Hall Park as well. But I just, you know, right now, I think if I put myself in the shoes of the people who go to the beach, they're showing up there and they see, obviously, the damage still, and they think, gosh, it's been two years. They haven't rebuilt that yet? Well, I mean, if there's any way we can help fill in some of the gaps and answer some of the questions for them so that they don't think that we're just, you know, not interested, I think that's what we need to do. I am on board with all this except for the timeframe, man. The timeframe just is really not sitting well with me, that's all.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Hunter?
Regarding Commissioner Hammond's request, we can easily do that much like we do for the road projects. We can put update signs and continuously update those signs at each location as well as update our website regularly as well. So we can do that.
So we could have a sign at the pier that shows everybody that's coming, you know, construction date due or?
Yes, and we could do that at Lynn Hall and at Crescent as well as Bowditch.
If I could, Commissioner, thanks for bringing that up, because like Commissioner Hammond said, you can put this out in the local news day, and nobody will see it the next day. So it'd be great to have a big eight-foot board, this was approved, whatever was reapproved today or in the future, this is before and after, showing the improvements, whatever it is, option two or option three, showing the improvements visual so people can see that they may just walk by and say, yeah, this is coming soon. We're in the process of permitting and, you know, and hopefully, staff can work on that duration with either project and expedite that as much as we can. If there's an issue with Army Corps, have one of us, you've got the, what, five great lobbyists here that can hopefully work with the Army Corps, can work with the different departments, and hopefully get the permitting process pushed even faster. It can be done. We saw what the governor did with the bridges in three weeks, so it can be done. We just have to work together, those agencies, and try to get this permitting to expedite that permit process. Thank you.
Any further comments? Come on up?
You already closed.
I closed public comment, so I actually apologize. I did close public comment. So unfortunately, I can't take it.
I understand. I understand.
As we move back to the board. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Pendigras, for that. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Greenwell to approve option number three. We have a second from Commissioner Pendigras, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any further discussions? Are there any objections? No objections at this time. We will move forward with option three unanimously, 4 to 0. That now concludes manager items. Mr. Welch, county attorney items.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You have none? Okay. Okay, moving to public presentations by citizens. I have some comment cards, and I will call you up, and then I will also call the second person that can start getting ready, maybe move to the aisle to help the process here. First will be Kizzy Fowler. If I pronounce your name wrong, please correct me when you come up. Couple things, you have, you don't have to touch the mic. It's already set. Light's green. When it turns yellow, you'll have one minute to finish up your comments. So please go ahead. Please state your name, ma'am.
Kizzy Fowler. I'm here today, I'm a private citizen for the county, and I'm here today to stand with Charleston Park. This community have been, have not been equally representative in the county. Towards resources have been limited or discontinued over time. I'm asking for the commissioners to look into these concerns. They have, at a point in time, they was receiving those resources, but the resources has ended. And that's through the county agency, through, I'm sorry, I'm a little shaky, through county agency. I'm asking for the commissioners to look into these concerns and bring back those resources that will help this community to... issues and things that are going on in Charleston Park, but I just wanted to come in just to let you guys know, it made the commissioners to know, to try to take some time to hear from them, and also, if you do get a chance to visit Charleston Park in East, on East Lee. They are eager to fight for equal, equality and inclusion. Charleston Park may be a small neck community, but it's full of hope. Like I say, they're here now, and getting the opportunity to speak for themselves, but I just wanted to come and let you guys know that they have been left behind, and it's not only one that spoke in the, in this community, everyone spoke about it, so, we know, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Kaylin Edison? Up next will be Dawn Davis.
Good morning, thank you for taking my comment. I'm Karen Edison, and I'm here also in support of all the communities in East Lee. I understand they're paying taxes like I am in Fort Myers Gateway Community, but they're getting four cents on the dollar back to their community, and I'm hearing that we're spending thousands of dollars for affordable housing, but we're spending millions of dollars to bring in amenities for our tourists. So, I really encourage the commission to look at places like Charleston Park in Lehigh, because Charleston Park is coming up on 100th anniversary, and we could do a great job with ribbing-cutting ceremonies in a year's time. So, if we put a little polish on it, it could be great for the whole county, and not just a Band-Aid, but something with substantial services, clean water, clean air, and housing, and skip the Ferris wheel, skip the lengthening of the piers, because if you have that much money in reserves, let's put it toward the people, not toward extra, extra, extra big things. Let's put it for extra, extra care. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Davis?
Good morning, my name is Dawn Davis, I am the treasurer for Charleston Park Neighborhood Association, representing Charleston Park today. Just wanted to share with you guys, we are a small communit, community as was stated before, however, we are a thriving community. We also have a concern for, not only housing is what was mentioned before, but also transportation. Transportation is one of our biggest issues for the people in our community. We have several of our residents who have disabilities and are not able to get cars. We have young people who are coming up to be young adults, who do not have adequate transportation, they cannot drive, some of them. We have no public busing. We also understand that there is no plan in place to have public transportation come into our community. So, we want to bring these issues out to you, so hopefully that you can address them and to look into them for us. Also, housing, we were, we, in the community, we had housing there at one point, it has been taken away. We had over 400 residents that live there, we had over 180 of those residents who were displaced because their public housing was taken away. We have residents today who have expressed to us repeatedly that they want to come back into our community if there was housing available, so we're asking for infrastructure assistance as well, public housing in our community again. I don't know why it was taken away before, but it has been taken away, and we're, we would like to have it back again. And again, we just, we're, we're here, we're law-abiding citizens, we are taxpayers, and we deserve everything that every of the other commu, communities receive. We're not asking for a handout, but we're asking for a hand up, and we're asking you guys to look into these issues and our concerns and take them with heed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to make a, an offer and a, and a comment about it. That is my district.
Okay.
And I would love for you to make an appointment.
Okay.
For you and a few people come into my office, and let's see if we can work on doing some of these things.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next will be Joyce Capan, Capana?
I don't remember.
You are, you're done?
Did you say number seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I had it, I had it in the wrong pile there. Last will be Janie McCarthy?
Good morning. We're here about Lehigh and the water, and thank you for listening to us, thank you very much. We got together last night and, as a neighborhood, and we didn't know for sure if this the correct meeting to be in to get information as to how we move forward, but we know that we're desperate and we need to move forward. And we're hoping that if you all can't help us at this time, that you can tell us where to go, so we can get help, because our houses and our lives are in jeopardy because of the flood. As you know, that Lehigh is, hasn't been attended to in quite a while for us, the canals and the drainage systems, and that's what's causing problems. And with the new communities coming in, the water is coming down in our area and the Buckingham area, I'm sure you saw it on the news, and what we're here for is to ask for help, because we, the people are already starting to move out, selling their houses and moving out because of this problem. It's going to be a situation where we won't be able to sell our houses, and we won't know where to go and what to do. So, we're depending on you guys for help, and we hope that you will hear us and lead us where we need to go.
Hi, and I'd like to add, we've been in our, our home, Alvin Avenue, for 23 years, and we've, our children have been born and raised in that house, and they're grown now, well, almost, and one of them's still not, but I was considering moving myself, because over the 23 years, we just, the past six years, started getting the flooding, and it seems to be getting worse, just from this tropical storm. We couldn't leave our house for days, the, the flooding is just, it's come, our whole, my whole backyard is gone, it's up to the hill and my, to my back porch.
All of our house.
And if we would have gotten more rain, if that rain would have continued.
Another day.
We were praying that it would stop, and praise God it did, but if it would have continued, our houses would have been completely flooded, and we just would have been, a lot, a lot of people in our neighborhood can't afford flood insurance, a lot of people are on fixed incomes, and this is a real concern for us. Every storm, we, we start to get concerned, and we all start praying, so, and the community, everyone in our area is concerned.
Let's see, Mr. Harner, can you make comments to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe, we, we'll get with you after this to find out the location. I believe this may fall under LAMCID, but let us determine the area, and then we'll, we will help coordinate with the proper entity.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I think it was, I think the street, I think it's under LAMCID, so that's in charge of the, the canal that they're.
Marcia Ellis?
Oh, thank you. I do have a handout, I didn't know if I should approach or not, and too much to get this on the camera, if you'll just hold up, for each of you?
Please leave them with them.
Oh, yes.
Can she approach?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry, Marcia.
No, that's quite all right, appreciate the clarity. Marcia Ellis for the record. The issue of flooding in this community is real. On September 23rd of 2022, five days before Hurricane Ian, I wrote you all, as well as Natural Resources, and followed up with a phone call. I was so deeply concerned, because I literally was watching thousands of croods hatch outside of the flowway in front of my house, and I figured that we were in for it. In my email and in my call and follow-up conversation with Natural Resources, I asked that we please set up a system so that members of the community can use their cellphones, their little microprocessors to geotag where flooding is occurring in their neighborhood, and communicate that information to the county. Why is that important? It's important in, in terms of documenting high watermarks, documenting where the flooding is, informing Natural Resources, perhaps informing emergency services, and also looking at the sanitary sewage overflows and the risk to public health from the flooding. Sanitary sewage overflows are illegal, and they proliferate. The sanitary sewage overflow in Cape Coral in the rain in January lasted 10 days. Just in this recent event where there was widespread flooding in the community, there was a news story out in San Carlos Park, the manhole cover had blown off, there's toilet paper and other refuse floating down the streets, and folks don't even know if that's normal anymore. All right? I know from attending the FDP resilience meeting about a year ago, that at that time, there was no way really for people to report those sanitary sewage overflows to the FDP. There is still, even though that system is now open, I checked, because the rule currently is they will notify you within seven days and let that sink in, all right? There's not clarity in the community. People don't know how to report those sanitary sewage overflows. You're missing an opportunity to get real-time data from everyone in this community about flooding, and people lack clarity about how to document floodings, and they need that information to, in order to be able to make claims. So, here we are, and you guys are getting ready to go on your vacation, and our community is not as prepared as we need to be, based on the enormous rain that rolled through our community just, just the other day. So, I'm just asking that we, we use some of the messaging that, that Lee County has been stepping up, and that I get on my phone, and many of us give on our phone, to give us some clarity about what we can do. We can all do better, right? I think that we can strive for excellence, we're never going to achieve perfection, but we can strive for excellence.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Please come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Linda Schomer, nice to see you again. I'm here again with another story that requires investigation and change in regards to what's happening at LCDS and what's happening in our community. On June 4th, an LCDS officer went to a home in Cape Coral, just one of many calls to this house by a concerned citizen over the course of the past year. They were found with two dogs locked in freights in a sweltering garage. Report made no mention of the dangerous heat, and it was deemed unfounded for neglect. On June 6th, they returned to that home at the demand of another citizen, because the temperature in her similar garage midday on the same street was 97 degrees. Temperature was determined by the officer with an open door to be 91. There was a portable air conditioner present, but the owner hadn't bothered to hook it up. They had no water in their crates. She was educated that she would be charged with animal cruelty if it wasn't corrected. On this day, Pete Santana waived surrender fees if she chose to give up her dogs. On June 10th, one officer, Wallace, returned to the property, but yet still had, there was no water, and a sweltering hot garage closed up with only three inches open. When she was approached with citations, she became quite upset, and she asked if she surrendered her dogs, would that make my citations go away? The officer stated he would cancel citations, which he did, and she surrendered her dogs. This is clearly against standard operating procedures, found in Attachment J of the SOP Officer Manual. Effectively, he had not only aided in the surrendering of the animals, he facilitated and encouraged it by his actions. It is quite clear that having her citations canceled was her reward and motivation for surrendering them. She may have corrected the situation and gave her dogs a better life if not for Officer Wallace dangling a carrot. As a result, these little dogs, Canela and Lobo, just three years old, were sent to LCDS scared to death, shivering in their cages. Kennel managers stated how sweet they were and loving, but yet they put them on a plea for a rescue, not adoptable. Multiple emails have been sent to Pablo Adorno begging him to extend these little dogs' death date. There's been no response from Mr. Pablo. These dogs have suffered enough, and now as we speak, these little sweet dogs could be getting muzzled, held down, struggling, unimaginably terrified with a needle to be put in their arm. Commissioners, please, you need to step up and stop this madness going on over that place of sadness, death, and apathy. Someone needs to find out why this place is so broken. Someone needs to find out why Pablo Adorno cannot run his department efficiently, humanely, and safely. Every day that goes by that you, the Commissioners, do not look into this and stop it, many animals will die unnecessarily, abandoned and failed by those who are supposed to prevent their suffering. It is up to you, Commissioners, to stand up, help these animals, and do your job.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Public comment?
Hi, Lori Hepner, Voices for Lee County, good morning. I would just like to start out with the fact that we have been to LCDS and spoken with all the higher-ups, we have been to the county managers and spoke with them also. We certainly are not seeing the help that we thought we would. We have been here to the Commissioners' meetings several times, and port our hearts and souls out to you. We're asking, what we're asking for is for you to please work with us for the better of the shelter and a better quality of life for these animals. We need your help on getting to the root cause. We have overcrowded shelters, rescues, and fosters, which these root causes, they're not happening. We don't have low, low-cost and no-cost pay and neuter programs. Why are we not implementing the trap and release programs that used to work so well? And why do we not have stiffer laws following the, the, following up on backyard breeders? Lee County took in over 10,000 animals last year, and they euthanized almost 2,700, that's almost 30%. What is really sad is that so many of them were completely adoptable. Why does this continue to happen year after year? And where so many other facilities, shelters, and humane societies that are, are doing a fantastic job of being no-kill shelters, and yet LCDS can't even come close? It seems that, like, all we ever get is excuses. We would like to know, Commissioners, are you willing to work with us? We definitely need and would appreciate your help. If you could really, if you really care about the well-being and quality of life of the animals, then please do the right thing, sit down and meet with us, and let us figure out how we can do this together. Again, all we're asking, this is all we're asking, we do not think Lee County will ever be a no-kill shelter, probably not, however, we do think that they can do 100% better. See, so many people, hundreds of people, residents in this county, have tried desperately to make changes to no avail. Will you please be the ones to step up and help? As you make your decision, please think of the faces of these precious animals as they are walked down to their death and euthanized, and again, so unnecessarily. With a show of hands, how many are, do you, you now have animals or have had been, have been pet owners? And with a show of hands, how many will be willing to meet with us?
Thank you. Any other pub, any other public comment?
Thank you.
Good morning, please state your name.
Good morning, I'm Belinda Moore, speaking on behalf of Charleston Park, and I just really want to see buses come to Charleston Park, because I am a cyclist, and I do like to cycle, but I do drive now, so I can park my car at home and take a bus to Fort Myers Beach and cycle back if I want to. So, I'm just here on Charleston Park behalf, and hoping y'all get buses to come to our community, and thank you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, any other public comment at this time? Yes, sir, please state your name when you come up.
My name is Jerry Davis, I'm a farmer.
Please state it up here, please, if you would, yes, sir.
My name is Jerry Davis, I'm a farmer, I've been farming for the last 12 to 14 years in Lee County, and I noticed out in our area out there, we don't have somebody to represent us as farmers. You know, I've been trying to get into the USDA grants and everything, trying to offer people jobs out where we live. You know, farming is just as big as grocery stores, that's where most of it go. You know, I do healthy stuff, I, you know, farm, and want to see our place, our area grow up. up. I see they're putting in that new road coming from I-75, cross from Naples up to I-60 up here. They developing, but we are not, we are not developing our area for that event. So, you know, I just want to let stuff out and say, you know, they give peoples in our area jobs, they don't have to travel big distances to go to work, they can come and work on the farm, and I can be there to help them as we help ourselves in Charleston Park. So, that's why I decided to come by and just try to address that, because for years, I've been doing it for over fourteen years, and it's been tough, but I'm surviving.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
At this time, any other public comment? Good morning, please state your name.
I'm LaShay Russ, I have the privilege of being the resident coordinator in Charleston Park. So, a lot of the people that you've heard speak about so many things, I get to see it firsthand, every morning, when I show up to work, when I show up to try to scramble something together to get them through another day. Today, it's a little bit up and down for me, but I'm glad I could put a face with names today, because I can't say that for years prior. I've heard your names, but I really believe that you all, just listening to you, that you would do what's good for people. I know we have things we have to do, as far as systems and things, we got to do to help people, but I want you all to remember, when you're thinking about Charleston Park, think about these people, because when I have to look at them every day, it would do me so much good to have the backing of all of you to at least get the people what they need. And I'm not asking for everything, all in one shebang, because as we can see, that's not possible to happen, but all I'm asking is that you help me help them, be the people that they've always been. They've been there since nineteen twenty-six, I had the privilege of being a part of this community for over twenty years. My husband passed away last year as the president of the association there, and I planned on continuing to help them strive to continue to do what they've always done since nineteen twenty-six, is be a strong community, but we need help. We are part of Lee County, and you hear Charleston Park, Charleston Park, but if we called ourselves ALVA, we'll get lost in the mix, so that's why we're saying Charleston Park today, because we are a part of ALVA, we are in Lee County, we're not Hendrick County, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
I could, I was going to make sure, we had a long meeting, I was going to make sure people watching who were here today saw, we spent like eleven million dollars to build up here, that sounds like a lot of money is obviously coming from, I was going to make sure everybody understands that was TDC funds, bed tax, that can only be used, we're covered by state statute, we can only use that money, for example, we can't use it in Charleston Park, Fort Myers, Pine Man, or Lehigh, that money can only be used for tourism, needs for like either marketing, for sports development, or for sure, and also for projects like this, capital projects like the pier, so we cannot use that money for communities, we cannot use it for labor costs of the Sheriff's Department or anything else, Pine Man or any other community. So, make sure people understand, we see us spending money, as we said earlier, the one lady, Karen, spoke, said that we spend all this money on tourism, but that money can only be used statutorily by the state of Florida laws on tourism projects, because tourist taxes collect for that, so everybody understands that. So, again, thank you.
All right, thank you for clarifying. Okay, at this time, I will close public comment, any other comments from the board? We have a workshop, Mr. Harner, could you please update us for the workshop this afternoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, at one-thirty at Admin East, we will be holding the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget development workshop.
Does anyone wish to speak in the public comment on the workshop this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment. If there's no further business in front of us, we are adjourned.